I call the planning commission meeting for June 16th, 2022 to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Ms. Small?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, May 26th, 2022.
No move. Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Abstain.
Mr. Haddon?
Abstain.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have three public hearings and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a recreational facility gym at 7673 and 7679 St. Clair Avenue. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Please come up, give us your name and address and tell us a little bit about what you want to do at the location.
Hello, my name is Daniel Jacobucci.
Could you spell that?
Common spelling, just kidding. So it's J-A-C-O-B-U-C-C-I. I'm the owner of Upgraded Industries Fitness Facility. We're located currently at 7657 St. Clair. We're looking to reoccupy about 40 feet away, the additional two buildings because we're out of space, which would be 7669 actually and 7673 St. Clair. So within that facility, we're looking for, basically, we need to double our space. We were out of space in the existing building. Enterprise Door happened to be leaving and looking for a bigger facility. Timbers Kovar, our neighboring adjoining business, needed another place. We all have the same landlord. We all kind of got together and said, hey, this works out for all of us. How do we make this work? Here we are. So the existing building ended up working out pretty great in accordance with your guys' rules here. The fire doors, the panic doors, I knew were a huge thing. I'm a former, actually retired firefighter, so I knew that was a huge, huge deal. Enterprise initially wanted to take those doors with them. I told the landlord, hey, hey, let's, let's make some magic happen here. We got those doors in, we have the panic switches, we have all the illuminations done. I've already had Five Star come out, do all the hydrants, yeah, do all the hydrants, hydrants, I'm sorry, extinguishers as well as illumination, all the exits, all the egress, all that is already marked. So I'm working diligently on all that. As far as construction went, didn't need to do any. It was set up kind of ideal, that's why this whole thing took place. I initially didn't want to move and then I kind of did the walk around and I was like, well, this layout works very well. So we basically just closed off one office and everything kind of fell into place. So other than some paint, it kind of was ideal.
All right, thanks. Hang loose real quick. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Two things, Mr. Chairman. I would note, our chief building official asked us to clarify the proposed condition number seven. All egress doors shall have panic hardware due to occupant load exceeding 49, not over 50. That was a line item underneath the engineering and building comments, so it's, it's, he just asked that we clarify that. So instead of saying over 50, just say exceeding 49. And then the only other comment would be if I, if I would ask if the applicant could explain the matches and the competitive events or tournaments that they hold so that the commission understands. We have that item outlined in number six and that it's, it's not an open to the, to the public kind of event, events, but these are limited to members and if he could maybe expand on that.
I would love to because I knew this was going to come up and this is something that I had talked about with Mr. Decker and Mr. McFarland. What I assume you guys think is going on is like some sort of Fight Club and I'm holding and promoting fights. That's not the case. I'm actually a professional mixed martial art fighter myself. I'm licensed and governed by the state of Ohio as well as multiple other states. I'm a coach. I therefore have a license in coaching as well. If I was to hold a fight, I lose my license. Then I lose my business and then I can never fight myself. So what we do have as competitions is basically inter-gym sparring. We have teams come from New York. We've had teams come from other, you know, other gyms in Lake County. So it's basically like you would hold a wrestling match, except for now we're adults. So it's inter-mixing. There is no fighting for money, there is no prizes or none of that. I'm, I'm, I'm a governed athlete, so that's not worth my license nor is it worth my business. So I, you know, I understand that the cage fighting and the grappling, yes, you know, it looks terrible. My father has never even come to one of my fights. So yes, I understand that, but it's not what goes on. We actually have an adopt a cop program, which is we train first responders, primarily police officers in self-defense. So it is a licensed program, it's throughout the country. We basically adopt these police officers until they get what's called their blue belt. We eat the cost of it and we train them for free so that they're safe for the public.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? Mr. Crocker?
Just to clarify, these matches are not open to the public, they are just...
See, they have to be, they have to be members, so they would have to register with us and they have to be accepted, they have to be on the teams that we invite. So it's not like some random Joe Schmo that doesn't train can walk in and get, and get hurt. That's not, that's not going to happen ever.
Okay, okay. And what is the average crowd of something like this? How many, how many people do you draw?
It depends. We usually limit them anyways because for safety reasons, one, and you know, we do brackets and things like that, we usually limit to 10-man brackets because it's just a pain if you get anywhere past that. So we do limit them. The last one that we did was for a fundraiser so that we could expand into the new gym because costs got very expensive very quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a, go ahead. Motion to approve with the seven conditions with number seven changing to exceeding, not exceeding 49.
Second. Is it not exceeding?
No, over. Load exceeding 49.
Load exceeding 49 pounds?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
We have a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility, Noodles &amp; Company at 9210 Mentor Avenue, Unit A. Is that applicant here? If you please come up, give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do at this location.
I am from Chipman Design Architectures as the architect for Noodles &amp; Company. We are looking to permit, this is actually two separate permits, but this first one will be for the drive-through aisle to utilize. So existing is a T-Mobile store that did not utilize this drive aisle. I believe the tenant before that was a bank. So this drive aisle has been dormant for some time. So we are looking to reuse this drive aisle for what we are calling a pickup window. So Noodles &amp; Company is using a pickup, pickup area, so they're using the window and the drive aisle for customers to pick up pre-ordered meals either on the app, on the phone, online. So there will be no ordering at this drive aisle, it'll really just be for picking up. So you'll see in our plans, we do not have a speaker box, we do not have a menu board outside. It really is for picking up orders for these customers.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration on the drive-up?
If the architect could just explain, the canopy's coming down, is that the only architectural change?
On the exterior?
Yes.
And the addition of the new window. So there is no window currently. I believe the T-Mobile had sealed that wall up, so there will be a new window install.
Anything from the commission members on the drive-up? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with the six conditions.
Just the one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's in reverse order here, on the one condition.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have a conditional use permit to allow outdoor dining and/or drinking, Noodles &amp; Company, at 9210 Mentor Avenue, Unit A. Will you talk a little bit about the outside dining and/or drinking?
Sure. Noodles &amp; Company is looking for outdoor dining seating. As you know, with the pandemic, there is actually less dine-in now with Noodles &amp; Company. I believe it's been reduced to 20%. So they are looking for options to have customers eat outside as much as possible and it is pretty common for Noodles &amp; Company to add a patio outside. So there will be railings and bollards installed for the safety of this patio area as well.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Nothing other than the six items noted.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the six conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good old business, number four will remain on the table. New business, we have an architectural review of a commercial building, Barb and Patty's at 9540 through 9460 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, I have to step down for this applicant.
Okay, thank you. Please give us your name and address and tell us a little bit about Barb.
Sure. So my name is Mark Multry, Gem Construction. We're located at 200 Black Brook Road in Painesville. And what we're looking to do is facelift here for the current Butcher Palace and Beauty Box Suites. So with the new Trader Joe's location moving in next door, the owner, Barb Wish, of Barb and Patty's, wanted to spruce up her, her building, so we're proposing to, again, resurface the face of the current building and the, the gables, the two gables that come out the front are new structures to the building. And the exterior renovation does not only include the front elevation, it also includes highlighting the rear elevation as well. The reason being is because as a part of the agreement with Trader Joe's moving in next door, she sold off a part of her parcel for the stormwater basin that was needed and they agreed to put in the parking lot. So that means that the primary entrance for Beauty Box Suites is now the rear entrance, so we wanted to try to highlight that in some fashion so, and to provide the customers some protection as they're coming and going from that entrance. So not only are we doing the front elevation renovation, we're also doing the rear elevation renovation as well. So I do have some samples of the products that we plan to use and some color samples, so I'm not sure what's the best way to showcase those, but I guess I could just hold them up. So the, the center part where the gables are at, we plan on using this color red and earth. It looks a little pinkish in the picture, but it's more of a clay red color, not necessarily the peachy color that seems to be on the screen there currently. And then for the, the rest of the face, and this is all going to be a stucco type of a product, we're going to be using this antler velvet color for the main body. And then for all of the softening fascia and bordering around the antler velvet color, we're going to be using a dark bronze color for all of the aluminum wrap and/or bordering. So we really tried to pick some natural color tones to coincide with the surrounding buildings and even with the new construction next door of Trader Joe's. And lastly, the stone veneer that we plan on using at the base of the columns is this Torino Weather Ledge stone veneer, and that's just going to be at the base of the columns and then there'll be a two-inch sandstone cap. Part of our original design actually included a stone wainscoting across the entire bottom of the front elevation of the building, but cost prohibited that, but may be a future application that they will consider. And I will also say that if you're not familiar with the building, the current exterior rock face block does have a peachy reddish color tone to it. So again, trying to pick colors that aligned with the current structure and again blend with the surrounding businesses, so that's the, that's the plan.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, out of the four conditions recommended.
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Could you just hold those two colors up next to one another, just see?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. I just was trying to picture what that looked like. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you guys, have a great evening.
We have a final site plan of an industrial building at 9525 through 9535 Hamilton Drive. That applicant here, please give your name and address and tell us a little bit about it.
I'm Frank Castro Valari with FMC Architects, 7675 Harley Hills Drive, North Walton, Ohio, 44133. We're here seeking a final site plan. We're building a brand-new 125,000 square foot building. It'll be designed for a two-tenant, but we are aiming for a single tenant to occupy the space. That's why we're land banking some of the parking lot. So just in case we have to go to a two-tenant, we do have all the proper parking spaces. We have an existing pond in the upper right-hand corner, which is dedicated to the street, so we, that's an existing condition. So we are providing three ponds in order to take care of our existing, or our new building I believe you guys have reviewed this once before. We've tried to accommodate all the questions from the last time. We, I think there's a couple items that we might have to pick up. I think one might be the plat, if that was one of the items.
Kathy?
The, I think the one item, it's under item number three. The proposed lot shall either be created by minor subdivision or the recordation of the Mentor Innovation and Technology Park plat. So because the way it was originally proposed, it was sublots two and three, so I think we're just looking to acknowledge that they need to be combined and, and if it's not going to be, depending on the timing of when the plat's getting recorded, either it needs to be then split out or just updated for the plat purposes.
To my understanding, it hasn't been plot made up into a plat yet, so we can't do one until the road gets put in. So at the time when the road does come in, we were just going to propose a single plat instead of doing the two and then coming back and consolidating. But I just wanted to let everyone know that it is in the works, it is going to be done, but we can't do it now because we legally can't do it until the road gets put in.
Okay, thanks. Anything from the commission members?
This is for a site plan, right?
Yeah, just the site plan. Mr. Crocker?
Just, just a question. I noticed that the road is not completed. Now, do you plan on continuing on for this building before the road is completed or...
No, I mean, we're hoping that the road's going to be, it's being worked on.
Okay.
You know, so hopefully the road will be done. We're just trying to get a jump on this so we have materials and everything else set up, so. Everything should be in place when we're ready to rock and roll, so.
So you've read the staff, I'm sorry, Mr. ...
No, you're right.
You've read the staff report?
Yes.
You're okay with the 12 conditions then?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, I just wanted to let you know that we can't do the plat until later, so.
So Mr. Zeman, is that, is that okay?
Fine by us.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with 12 conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have an architectural review of an industrial building at 9525 through 9535 Hamilton Drive. Will you tell us a little bit about the architecture now?
Sure. Well, thank you. So I just wanted to clarify, there might have been a little mix-up with the colors, so I just wanted to straighten this out right now. The dark color, this, what is it called here? Sands of Time will be the banding, which shows up in the rendering, and the lighter field color, which is called Sand Dollar. Sorry. So these will be the two colors that we are proposing to go. So I know that there was a little mix-up, maybe I switched it at one point, I don't know. We also have front entrances with, we are, we're taking the same color, the same material, and we're going to do both the front entrance and the dumpster enclosure. This is a face brick, but the dumpster enclosure is a through brick, so it's an eight-inch wide. So we have, this is very, very similar to what we're going to do. It's may not, ah, sorry, may not be the exact color, it's going to be the availability, but it'll be one shade lighter, one shade darker, but we're aiming for this color right here. Again, depending on time and when it can get in, but this is the, the brick and block that we're aiming for. The dumpster will have this pattern, so it'll match the face brick, same size, same look, same shape, and that's one reason why we picked the same company to do both. And with that color, the, the windows will be anodized aluminum, we've all seen this before, it's just the standard aluminum, and that's really the color scheme of the building.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Rooftop units?
Yes.
They never show up on the elevations, I understand.
Yes.
How, how big are they or where are they placed and how do we not see them?
We are going to be placing them towards the center and the notion is that you won't see them, and if you do see them and there's an issue, we will screen them.
We could make that a condition?
Yes.
Sure.
Absolutely.
I mean, and when I think about not seeing them, I don't want to see them when I'm driving up to the building down the street, you know, I see the building.
Understood, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Good. So we'll make, we'll make that an additional condition for the architectural review. We did address the, if you notice, the entrance...
Rick, could you give us your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Richard Summers, Mentor Industrial. We did address the, if you notice, the entrances now, before were flat, we're bringing them out to give this project some relief so that we don't have a big, what is this building?
Flat building.
Big, flat, 500-foot-long building. So this is an improvement, we feel, and it should give it some pizzazz. If you notice, there are internal gutters, high-quality construction. Windows are bigger than originally planned to give it some light. And we will do, to address your previous question, we'll do a site dis- study to make sure that those units are, can't be seen from the road from either side. Another comment.
Mr. Varga?
Even though I know the landscaping was in the previous approval, when we look at the elevation, we can see that those few trees that you're showing, it would be nice if they were more regular. They look, I mean...
I purposely let them out because I, when I started adding them all in with the mound, we couldn't see the building.
Oh, I see. Well, yeah, I, I see, okay, well, yeah, that's fine, then I see what you're doing in the plant.
Yeah, I just wanted to put some to say we're, you know, here's some trees.
They just look nice in front of the building, but the building is simple, it's, you know, and then the trees...
But it got to be too much for the rendering.
I understand. That's fine. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Looks like a nice building to kick off this development.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, I make a motion with three conditions. The third condition is the requirement of possibly screening the mechanical units on the roof.
Mr. Chairman? We'll have to expand on that a little bit.
Okay. That the, with the, let's see, how can we put this?
I, I tried a little bit, but by all means, it's just a suggestion, so tweak it all you want. My initial was rooftop mechanical units shall be screened if they are visible from adjacent streets level view.
Sold. Okay? So we'll make that the third condition.
Absolutely. I know Larry was just recommending maybe prior, and adding prior to final occupancy.
Fine.
So let's say that condition one more time.
Well, he has it written down, so he'll say it.
Architectural review condition number three, rooftop mechanical units shall be screened if they are visible from adjacent streets level view and prior to final occupancy.
Agreed.
Is that...
So that's two.
I have a second.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have an architectural review of a commercial building, Sam's Club at 5600 Emerald Court. That applicant here, please give us your name and address.
My name is Sunday Buer with SGA Design Group, 1437 South Boulder Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Tell us a little bit about the architectural.
Well, it's existing, okay, but it's time to update and put a little bit of color into it that will make you guys know that we, we did update it. We picked up, you know, Walmart has adopted a new brand color. This is Walmart and Sam's, it's the blue. And you've got a earth-tone building with, you know, some really nice architectural features that break up the massing of the building. That's going to stay in place. We're just painting the areas that we plan on putting the new signage and updating the cornice to tie it all together with the, the blue. We'll be updating the, the cornice and the accent bands with a dark color that'll make it really pop. We're really proud of this building, it looks really good modeled.
Oh, sorry.
Is that all?
And they're going to be treating the whole building. They will be power washing the, uh, existing brick and stuff like that. It's totally nice.
Thanks. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we just noted in the report that the, uh, the blue area behind the proposed signs will be considered part of the sign area, something they need to be aware of, and that would likely require, um, a variance request, but that can be discussed separately. And we're, so the condition we made is for the reimaging only, not for signage.
Okay. Anything from the commission members? With that, it'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thanks. All the way from Oklahoma for that.
That's right. Thank you.
We have a miscellaneous review to transfer a conditional use permit at 7328 Industrial Park Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Okay, it'll entertain a motion to table number nine.
Um, table number nine?
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
A preliminary site plan of an industrial building at 9115 Tyler Boulevard. I see that applicant is here. Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about the site plan on Tyler.
Okay. Berry Demming, Demming Enterprises, 3767 Lane Road in Perry. Uh, this is a hundred and three thousand-ish square foot, uh, building on Tyler. Uh, the building is single slope, so at the lower side, which would be the lower side of the page, which is the west elevation, it's 24 feet at the eve, and then it rises to the center for a peak with the intention of adding on someday to double the size of it. So, that's kind of the reason for the configuration of it. Basically, the shop portion of this building will be, uh, internally heated, so there's not going to be any exterior HVAC units for the shop portion, and there'll be one exterior unit, uh, for the office portion, which will be ground-mounted. And I know we have to do a landscape plan, but obviously, we, we tried to show a little bit of screening there, but, uh, whatever we have to do to screen, whatever's in the corner, but I believe that the unit and most of the utilities, you can see the green area where some of the landscaping shown, most of the utilities and the HVAC unit will be in that area. So, we'll have to have a concentration of screening there to make sure that's all screened. But, uh, as for the rest of the property, we have a landscape plan to do yet, so, uh, whatever the code is, we'll have to meet that, but we haven't done that yet. Uh, as far as the building itself, uh, we went with 12-foot-high masonry around the entire perimeter with the thought of, with the 24-foot eve at the end, we would try to go half and half. So, it's 12-foot masonry, front and sides, uh, no masonry in the back, which faces, obviously, the back of the property. Uh, there are, aside from the, uh, full-height masonry that's in the office, there's an appendage on the west side where the compressor room and some other storages, that'll all be masonry also. And then, uh, as for the rest of it, it'll be standing seam, uh, metal roof and, uh, metal siding from the 12-foot masonry up. Uh, I think that's basically it. This is an expansion from mom, so it's not only expanding their existing operation, which is at 8989 Tyler, uh, but they're also consolidating some other facilities into this. Some of those are out of state even, so it's kind of a good thing for everybody.
One thing I found is, uh, on the west line, there's a 12-inch water line that runs along there. So, and it goes through to Hendrix or at least to 9122 on your plan, but my bet is that 12-inch goes to Hendrix. So, is, you're gonna have to beware of that, and then I see on your demo plan, the old building, or there, it looks like there's an eight-inch that goes to the east, so there could be some disruption of service to that, but you're gonna have to get with Aqua because I, I think there's gonna be more to that 12-inch water line that meets the eye.
And with the 12-inch, I don't think we're gonna have to do anything to it, and the intention would be the eight-inch, we will have to do something with that, and it's really even unclear what that eight-inch does. But, uh, once we figure that out, uh, the eight-inch will have to be moved, but we think that we can do that without disruption to the 12-inch, so whatever the 12-inch serves on Hendrix or wherever else it goes.
It looks like a loop for Aqua, but I, I don't know enough about their system, so I-
It's in the works, we just don't have the particulars yet.
Just so we don't disturb 9122, you have to go through notification and all that when it goes to water service. So, just be cognizant of that during this project.
Understood. And then all the other conditions we've read and agree with, we don't have any issues with anything that's been proposed or mentioned or suggested or anything, so, uh, we don't, we don't have any issue with anything.
All right, thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I just asked the applicant, uh, the proposed gravel pad there on the, uh, is that the, that's the east side? Um, what is that intended for?
The thought there, uh, there's two overhead doors on the west side and two overhead doors on the east side of the building in that approximate location, and that's where their trucks enter. Uh, they do have truck docks, but a lot of their stock is emptied right off the truck inside the building, so the thought was, is they wanted the trucks with the ability to pull into the building, unload, pull out, and either leave or turn around and come back through if they want. And, uh, and the reason it's shown as gravel is, obviously, if they add onto the building, we didn't wanna tear any asphalt up, but again, it's one of the conditions, and if it needs to be paved, then, uh, we're fine with it.
Okay. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant. Um, you mentioned that this is phase one of possible two. Um, when I was looking at the building, that, you know, the slope that runs from, uh, east to west is, from a standalone building, i- is, you know, something that we would probably say, is there something we could do with a parapet? Um, what would the possibility of phase two, and if so, is it a relative early timeframe versus it may never get built?
Obviously, I can't answer that definitively, but the discussion has been, you know, in the relative near future because of their growth. So, uh, we talked about making the building higher and pitched in the middle, but then it's awkward. You'd have to place it in the middle of the, uh-
Right.
-property and then add on to both sides, which was awkward. So, that's how we came up with this. So, from the owner's perspective, near future, but can't say really definitively. That's the intention, though, is to double it in size.
My, my comment before hearing the phase one versus phase two was that is there any way that we could, from the road frontage, get that horizontal line, you know, whether it's a-
Like a-
-parapet or something like that.
A parapet to square it off, you mean?
Even if phase one was the only one that ever gets built, that really reads, you know-
Or make that as a condition that if X amount of time passes or whatever, it's a quarter-twelve pitch, so it's pretty, pretty flat as it is right now. About as flat as you can make a standing seam roof.
I guess we can have the commission weigh in on that one. But, I mean, I would like to see that, just, even if phase two comes along, it's still gonna read as a square, which I think is a little bit more normal with the rest of the, the, um, buildings along that line.
I'm not sure what ABC Next Door has. I really didn't pay that close of attention as to if there's a squared or pitched or what it is.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
I know, this is just for site plan approval, but, uh, I always try to reflect a little bit, at least with some architectural review of the design, so that you, you can think about that before you come back to us. Um, the thought I have is with the south elevation, um, I think the, the city or the, would like to see more masonry on the face of the building. That make, that becomes a little hard, but maybe, for instance, where you have the, the mason, the office building protrudes forward, maybe the wall behind it could be masonry to kind of break the front of it and separate it a little more.
Like, uh, the office section have the masonry portion of that go all the way up, you mean, or?
Well, I mean, not, not to make that part two stories, but where that building touches the large story, the large building, that make the, the area behind that brick, so that central area is all brick, and then you just have the, the metal, the metal siding, then we just wrap around from the sides. It's just a thought. I'm, I'm not-
I'm not, I guess I'm not following what, uh-
Um, can we put the plan up, the elevation of that one section? If you just took the area, the width of the office structure-
Mm-hmm.
-and in the back wall, where the metal panels are-
Mm-hmm.
-you just make that go up, masonry, the same width as the office, it would kind of subdivide the front of the building and-
Take the masonry all the way up behind the office?
Yeah, at that, but at the metal wall. Remove the metal behind the, uh, office building and just make it masonry up. It's just a suggestion. I'm not telling you to do that. I'm just saying that would help break up from the street, the wall of metal panel, would increase the amount of masonry on the front of the building, and it's ju, it's a thought, how to approach it, 'cause right now, it's a little pedestrian, and that might give it a little more, a little more dynamic image.
Okay.
And, and you did say there's no mechanical units on the roof.
There's only, none on the roof, and there's only one that's gonna serve the office, which will be on the left-hand side of the-
'Cause, 'cause this would be very visible if it wasn't, if it was up on that roof. Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else from the commission members? So, Kathy, condition number three. Let's circle back to that. The gravel services. So, our stance is we want asphalt or concrete.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I, Mr. Chairman, I would just refer back to, the applicant back to the analysis section, which we talk about the City of Menner Design Guidelines. It, it goes into detail, uh, to Mr. Varga's point, that really, we really try to discourage the metal panels on the front facade of the building, so that would be the goal, is to try and, try and eliminate that as much as possible.
And I was just suggesting a possible approach to start to address that condition, which is, we're not voting on that now, but the next time you come through, I'll just-
Do you think along those lines, if the masonry went up to within a couple foot of the peak at that area, and then it allowed the metal to kind of be contin, it's an oddball connection with, with the, uh-
With the slope.
With the slope.
Something, something like that. I mean, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
They would really break it up nice and-
Right, but you would, you could create a little more interest in that-
Okay.
-wall that faces the, the elevation faces the street. Be creative.
All right.
Yeah, in my experience, we've been a little more flexible on the masonry on the sidewalls if you advance it on the front. That's-
Okay.
With that, it'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with twelve conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Miscellaneous review to vacate an easement at 6277 Heasley Road. Is that applicant here? Please give us your name and address. Tell us about what you want to do.
Uh, my name is Lindsey Krauth. On behalf of Polychem LLC, 6277 Heasley Road. Um, at this point in time, we are requesting a road, uh, vacation of the roadway easement that runs along the frontage of our property, along Heasley Road. Um, with that, uh, to vacate this easement, it is on behalf of the sale of our property to a sale-leaseback situation.
Hi, I'm, I'm Tim Brechner with Colliers. Our address is 200 Public Square in Cleveland. Um, we understand, the property's being sold, but in, Polychem is, is committing to a 15-year lease, so they're not relocating the business. This is, um, uh, it's a financial tool to raise money for the business, so they're, um, selling the property and then leasing it for 15 years from the new owner, so the road easement that we discovered during due diligence, um, is an issue for the buyer, and we understand there's some utilities in that easement that, with the utility easement, no one has an issue with, obviously, and I think we need to, we actually need to clean up a sanitary and a storm sewer easement, which, which we can do as well, so really just want to vacate the road easement.
Thank you. Joe, can you speak a little bit on the u, the utilities that remain and are vacated right away?
Sure. Yeah, um, this, this has come up, and we've been reviewing it for quite some time, um, and it's, it's speculative, because this is, as you know, old Heasley Road was vacated there when the overpass went in, and, uh, and this little, this, this, this strip had, that had been, uh, granted to the city by dedication plat for the subdivision, was retained. I, I tend to think that was not an, an error of omission. I, I tend to think that because there were some utility lines running through it, again, speculative on my part, we don't really have any great insight as to what the thought processes were, is that it was in fact retained, just because there, there are some lines going through there. Uh, that said, definitively, it's, it's no question that was additional highway easement, uh, that was granted, probably to add a little additional width of pavement for what was then Heasley Road when the subdivision was approved. You see, it's not exactly, uh, an even width. You can see it varies a little bit as well, uh, on your, on your plat. So, um, under Ohio law, uh, when the highway easement is vacated, if there are any utility lines, public utility lines located within the, uh, the highway easement, they, they, they get sort of a springing legal interest, which is the form of an easement that Ohio law recognizes. So, um, you know, whether it's, you know, electric, gas, what have you, um, the vacation of the highway easement springs forth a utility easement so that those lines remain in place. There's nothing that the city, you know, can or will be doing about those. The storm line causes me a little consternation, 'cause it's not a public utility, and that's why you'll see the condition in there, where we're requesting a separate, uh, grant to the city to continue to maintain that storm line, uh, lined through there. So, that will be a, simply a storm line easement to the city, uh, and, and it can be limited to that specific use. We, we require nothing, nothing more than that, so, that's it.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Just a question. You're only doing this because you're changing the ownership of the land and you gotta clean up the title, basically, right?
Exactly.
There's no plans ever to build over this or to, you know, you're not looking to-
No. It's, it's well within the setbacks where we couldn't build anything, and most of it's a hillside, too.
Right. So, the idea that you would come in conflict with the sewer line in the, at a later date would probably not be a reasonable thing to think about.
No.
Okay. And it looks like that easement goes all the way under the tracks and, and to the other side of the-
I, I don't know. We, we kinda only looked at it on our-
Yeah, from what we believe it does, um, from the engineering report that we received from an outside, from CT Consultants, um, we believe that it does run the full length of the frontal property up until through the train tracks.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else? I would recommend that you reach out to Lake County Department of Utilities regarding the sanitary portion.
Okay.
That, as a, just as a question, would the, does the city prepare the easement for the utilities, or do, do we, do we need to follow through on that?
Mr. Zeman?
I'll, I'll work with you on that.
Oh, okay.
With that, it'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the one condition.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
With that, Kathy, a couple items you want to talk about?
Yes. Uh, the, um, oh my gosh. So, I had emailed all of you, um, the prelimi, uh, the revised architectural for the Ganley dealership on Menner Avenue, and the architect has requested that you take a, a look at the changes that they've made and give him some feedback prior to them submitting their formal site, final site plan application and architectural review. He's here tonight. Um, hopefully, you were able to open up the document. If not, it's here now, and, and I know Mr. Booker, uh, I'm sorry, did I say that right? Booker, uh, he has, um, hard copies as well that we can pass out to you, but I'll let him, if that's okay, just kind of explain the changes.
Sure, just give us your name and address.
My name's Denver Booker with Bocon, 3142 Prospect Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio 44115.
Thanks. I guess, let's grab those hard copies. I know you're, you want them.
We'll leave you. Put that in the minutes I set there. Thank you.
You're gonna have to put more black ink in that, I can see that right away. That's a lot of black ink. Red? Can I go ahead?
Yeah, sure, please.
Okay. The last time we were here together, I'd asked that you give me some feedback in terms of the elevations that were pre, with our preliminary site plan submission. You, um, gave us a lot of feedback. I went back to Stellantis, the owner of the, the manufacturer, CBRE that, um, administers
of the elevations that were, with our preliminary site plan submission. You gave us a lot of feedback. I went back to Stellantis, the owner of the manufacturer, CBRE that administers the program for Chrysler, and Ken Ganley to come up with something that was responsive and still met the national brand standards and was responsive to your Village Core Design Guidelines. And in line with that, and then we had a follow-up conversation with Kathy and Larry from the planning department. They were helpful, and we revised it a little bit more. So, what we're showing you here this evening is we have added brick to the building in two colors, a light gray and a dark gray, each designed to blend with and be complementary to the metal panels for the two separately branded halves of the building, the Chrysler-Dodge Ram side and the Jeep side. So, the image here on the screen right now shows those materials in application with actual facilities. The top left is the backside of a facility with the same bricks that we're proposing to use on this building. To the right, we see what they call, it's a bamboo kind of imprinted finish at the Jeep entry, the polished chrome that surrounds that, and then the dark gray. So, you can see that in the three images, so that's the palette of materials that we're working with. And in the next slide, I think...
It's all black.
Yes, there we go. Here, what we see is that to the left, just going left to right, we have the silver metal panels. We've retained those, but at the base of the piers, on the most recessed portion of it, we have added masonry. That's like a masonry wainscote that carries around the entire face of the building, with the exception of the arched element, the metal panel goes to the ground there. Then moving to the right, there's a transition zone between the silver and the dark gray metal panel, and that is brick, base and top. And then to the others, to the right side of the Jeep, this is customer lounge, service right up in the service drive. It's all in brick, and then that returns around the east face of the building, the entire depth of the service drive. Go to the next image. It's a little closer to just that end of the building, the next. And around the corner, what we've done is that the west face is also handled in brick with the same, I mean, you can see a little closer, the wainscote detailing in terms of a larger-scale cast stone base, base detail. So, what we're doing is we're taking some more traditional details and blending with a more contemporary national brand standards. There's also, you can see it in this and the other images, a double soldier course at the top, just below the parapet, and that is consistent wherever we have the brick. And so, from the distance, as you're approaching it from the west, traveling east, you'd see the brick face, and then kind of the, kind of display window, if you will, in the metal panel. Moving along, approaching it from the east, traveling west, large expanse of the building in brick, and it returns along the east face. And then this is just a close-up of the west face. You see the brick, just a little bit of the metal panel returning at the front corner. And another image. A little closer. So, I hope that, I mean, kind of picked up on a lot of the commentary and discussion that we heard from you last week, or a couple weeks ago, a follow-up conversation with Kathy and her team, looking for any additional feedback before we submit this formally.
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I appreciate what you've done. You're moving in the right direction. I don't know that you're there yet, I mean, not to, in any way be critical. It still looks like two completely separate buildings jammed together, which I understand it's two different, you have two different brands, so. I, I went online just to see what, what these buildings look like. A lot of them look identical to your first presentation. They've built four, five, I don't know, maybe a hun, there's lots of them like that. But I did see some variation, where, for instance, they're starting to bring some things up. Do you have, did you ever find the one that I sent you? It's just not a good enough quality?
Yeah, we just could have zoomed through.
Well, if, let's, if we look at like your image number seven, I mean, these are all different variations, for instance, that people, you just go online, you can see different things that people have done in different places. But your number seven drawing shows the corner of the building, and I found an example, I guess the photograph wasn't good enough to, to present, so that it was too small and you can't blow it up. But basically, what someone else had done at a different location, yet with this contemporary look, was to treat the, not the, the surface that has the Ken Ganley on it, that was still the aluminum panel, but everything behind it was masonry. Instead of having the metal panels behind it, they had masonry behind it. And so, then I look at the opportunity of, well, you've got the nice gray masonry on the side, is, you know, there's the possibility of softening the front a little bit by wrapping that masonry on the back face and still keeping the aluminum section in front. I'm not telling you to do that, I'm just, I saw that someone else had done that, okay?
Right.
At another installation. You might do some research and see that. But that was a way of make, and then I think, well, we've got two, two different colors of brick, which, you know, I understand the black brick is dealing with the, the black panels in the Jeep and the, what looks like a nice color of brick on the, on the Ken Ganley, the Dodge side. Is there a way, maybe, that the, the two bricks could come closer together, the being, I'm not the same color, but not, not so black and white? I understand, black and white is almost the, is what they're handing you, I understand, but I'm, I'm ass, I'm suggesting the look, to see is can, could we unify maybe the brick color more or bring the two closer together so it doesn't, so it looks like one building, you know, so it looks like there's something that ties it together, you know, rather than just the silver side and the black side and a, and a, and a sealant joint that separates the two of them, you know? I, I know, I know where you're at. I understand the situation. But that's, that's something, I looked, I saw something different than this that was a little softer because it was a masonry background to it. You might look into that to see if there's something there, or if they could find something like that.
I think our intent, or our thought, was that the detailing associated with the brick in terms of how we handle the base and the top while they are in different colors, that was the thread that brought the, the two halves of the building together, and that the texture of the masonry was a way to connect them. Because in some ways, it's, while it is one business, it is two distinctly branded showrooms, and the manufacturer's been pretty...
I can imagine.
I mean, it would be, it's almost like two stores in a, in a retail shopping center that are branded independently, and while it shares a lot of features, at a brand level, they wanted to be distinct.
And, and I understand, but it's one building to us in our old village design district. So, even though I understand the duality that you're dealing with, it's still a single construction in our, our place, and I'm just trying to find a way to tie it a little more together so it looks like one building, you know, in our old village community, you know? I, I don't, you know, I understand. But you have to understand what I'm saying, too, is that it's, to still, to, to some degree, this is severe for where this is going in our community. And the, the dealership that was there before was kind of, you know, it was slightly residential, it was, it was interesting front showroom, and most of the building went back, and you didn't see it all, and it was easy for people to accept, and that was even before the, this district was defined. Now that it's defined, this is, you know, I mean, I think it would, I would be remiss if I didn't say it's still pretty severe to put into this location. And I'm just trying to find a path to, for you to, can you soften it a little bit? Can you bring that brick around? Maybe the two brick colors a little closer? Maybe the black front and the Ganley arched opening are the, are the hard pieces and the things behind it a little softer, that's all. And the, the left is a little closer to the right. I understand they don't want that, but I did, I did see that they accepted it someplace with the brick, so. They shouldn't do that if they want to, if they want to be rigid, they shouldn't make allowances someplace else because we'll find them, you know, and say, well, they, they did do something different, and for whatever reason, at that other location, so. That's it, that's it. There may be some other comments someone wants to make.
Mr. Chairman. My only question here, I know someone brought it up last week, but I can't remember who, I apologize, someone down there, about a masonry wall we discussed briefly, is that something you guys consider if we could do something like that, a nice masonry wall?
Is this what used to be there?
That's right.
Yeah, so it used to be there. I, I, obviously, you guys don't have to build exactly that, but something to soften that front facade when you're driving down the street, it just, I think that would help break up the very aggressive front you guys have versus what we have come to expect and what is in the code of the old Mennery Village.
Did speak with the owner about the potential for a wall, and he was really reticent to do that because, I mean, that's kind of where the cars are, and it kind of diminishes. I mean, we certainly plan to as part of the landscape. We have modified and updated the site plan over the last couple of weeks, and there's room for a significant landscape zone between the sidewalk and the front display, so it's going to be a nice landscape feature there, but prefer not to add the architectural wall.
Can I throw something else out about the wall? Maybe you could have a couple cars showing areas in front of the wall and then put a wall behind them? Totally throwing it out there.
Have to figure out how to get in the displays, but I, I'll take, you know, taking notes.
Well, in, in the history of that picture, you know, that's clear, that you can see that there's some memory, not maybe as much as some might think, but there's some memory of what used to be there, and some of the concepts or the memory of what people would like to see, the anticipation of the old village. I, I think you'd, it just, as, you have to address that somehow. I, I, you know, we're talking about different things, but the fact that it's in the old village zoning, you gotta, you gotta address that more directly. What would you say, Kathy? Is that a fair statement to make?
I, I agree, yes. And I think that was what I would expect to hear from you as a commission tonight. I think they're definitely, like you said, they're making efforts, but it seemed like a lot of the effort was on the sidewalls and a little bit less on the, on the front. The, the two end caps of the Ganley section, the brick that's on the very bottom is very, very slight, if that even could be brought up. I think, Mr. Varga, you and I talked about that a little bit, maybe even somehow carrying that up a little bit further. I don't know. That's just, again, that's just a thought, but it would be kind of cool to bring in, incorporate the wall. I don't know how you do that, maybe with a lower wall, but then maybe some...
What could be lighting associated with the?
Could you put the wall back up?
Or you could do sections of wall, or...
No, no, Larry, can you put the wall?
No, but I mean, like, sections of wall with some wrought iron or something, so you would still...
Right, that's what I'm thinking. Maybe you, maybe you do some pillars with some wrought iron. The essence of the wall is, I think, is what I said.
Be staggered.
Yeah, right.
Sections instead of an entire wall.
You don't know how many times I hear about this wall and the stories that people tell about walking to school and seeing this wall and the day when it came down, and it came down in like a day, and, and, and you don't understand how many times I hear this story. So, the essence of something that used to be, I guess, would go a long way.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's what I think old village is supposed to be, right? It's new construction that hearkens back to what used to be there, gives you a sense of vintage, whatever you want to call it, and a lot of shiny aluminum doesn't do that for me.
And, you know, no, I don't think we're expecting an eight-foot wall...
No.
...to cover up all the cars, but something that gives people the, the remembrance of what used to be, and that's why it was owned that way. And I understand you're up against, I do like your recommendation about wrapping this brick and then leaving the Ken Ganley portion in metal. I think that goes, that goes a long way, and, and I still think you have that, that look, at least on the west half, but, and then maybe soften that transition somehow. But I think you're getting there, I think we're getting closer. We went through this with another property down the street, you know, four or five times, and eventually we came to something that, that, that we all agreed on, and, and it's, it's very nice. I don't want to name the company, but it, it was, it's very nice, and we get comments all the time about it. So, I think we're getting closer.
Okay.
Is there anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman, one, just one more thing, and I know we've kind of talked about this, but I think what really, for me, does it with this, the old village district is really to try to be cohesive with the neighboring properties and pick up the design cues, and I think the unfortunate part is the dual branding, and we've talked about that, and, and I, I think, as Mr. Vargas said, it, it almost, to me, needs to, that these two colors need to start becoming almost one and maybe just a couple of key components that signify the Chrysler and the Jeep, rather than two things meshing, and they just, it isn't working. You know, in one building, we're getting that clash, but we're trying to make the whole district sort of cohesive so that, you know, I think there's going to be a real push to have these colors start to work together and somehow get the branding to work.
I'm not telling you to do this, but, you know, people expect red brick, and, you know, I, I understand that's probably not something I can suggest, but I can suggest the fact that you've incorporated a lot of masonry, there's still a lot of aluminum paneling, you know, can the masonry start to become closer together, you know, somehow sim, similar in less of the metal panel, you know? The front pieces of Ken Ganley and the Jeep, I understand that's like a frontispiece you've, but maybe more, what's behind that is more unifying the building than separating it. And, and say hello to Debbie for me.
All right, I really appreciate the informal feedbacks, very helpful, because we are on a bit of a tight timeline, and this helps me not find myself in a terrible position when I need to be getting a permit.
So, we'll see you in three weeks.
I'd have to make a submission tomorrow.
We'll see you in six weeks.
Unless I can come back with another informal review.
Which you certainly can.
Absolutely.
I would do that, then. We can plan to see you in three weeks for a similar, kind of, we'll call it a work session or whatever the right term is.
Right, we'll come, we'll...
Kathy, we, could we do, could we schedule a non-regular meeting work session? That's just advisatory?
You'd have to call a special meeting.
Call a special meeting.
You, you can schedule a special meeting.
I mean, I think we can do it.
If you had less than four people from the commission there, was that the official meeting?
It, it would not be...
Okay, well, no, I was just...
So, I don't know what value that would...
I'm not trying to...
Yeah, again, I certainly, I think the informal reviews, unless you want to call a special meeting, that's absolutely a prerogative, but I, I'd encourage the, the, the commission to work as a, work as a body in public, of course, yeah.
I wasn't trying to, you know, surround that.
Three, three weeks work for us.
We'll see you in three weeks, and we'll do it under the director's report.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Kathy?
Okay, one more item, and thank you for the extra time here. So, I, I did explain this in the email, but for the benefit of, of those watching, the police chief and I have been working with a gentleman who resides at nine zero eight six Lake Overlook Drive. This is actually behind the Headlands Community Center, and there was some confusion. The, the resident went to the police department to get a, a street barricade permit for a block party, and after some discussions and, and the police chief learned about the specifics of the event, found out there was going to be music at the event, and he said, you know, hold on, you probably should be going and getting this reviewed. And unfortunately, due to the timing of, of this realization and the fact that they wanted to do this on July fourth, they weren't going to be able to get onto this agenda in time, so we kind of came up with a compromise and, and said, okay, what we would normally do with one of these, because it's, it's on the same day as the Headlands Parade. It is not part of the parade, it will, it will begin right after the parade on private property. And again, a street barricade permit was issued, and they are holding this, they did receive signatures for the street barricade permit, so what we did is we asked him to, we assigned all of the addresses that we would normally notify for, you know, bringing to, to you, and we had, and added a few extras that we thought might be pertinent in hearing this, and asked him to get signatures, and he did that. So, he has provided signatures, they're all aware of the event, and there is music that's going to be held, again, just, again, in an effort to accommodate them so that he didn't have to cancel the bands. This was our way of just bringing it to your attention, making sure you were aware of it, the police chief, the fire chief, the city manager's aware of it, and they, the city manager thought this was a good opportunity just to make sure you were aware, and if you had any concerns, I could relay those to the applicant, but then we would, we would approve it as an, as a, under the application for a temporary event.
Thanks.
So, when, when is the music going on?
Two to nine.
So, that's, that's defined, and there's no admission?
No.
This is free to?
Yes.
And there, there's not, they're not selling anything at this event?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Food trucks going to come?
I think that might be part of the parade. I mean, that's generally part of the parade, but...
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking about some of this...
They're probably, I mean, being a block party, I would imagine neighbors are bringing food and so forth, but, yeah.
I'm just trying to see how much this is a commercial or, or...
It's, it's definitely...
It's not money-making, it's not commercial.
It's not.